We have an agenda that has been posted. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Seconded.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, first up is site plan review for 119 Edward Foster Road Marine Park Shed. Who we got?
I'm Brian Carreri, Situate Works.
Brian, could you move that so that it's right, not you, but the...
Oh.
So people can hear what you're going to say. Thank you.
Test.
Okay, why don't you give us the background and tell us what you're here for?
Okay, so what we're trying to do here is put up a small, small building structure. It's basically a shed for two purposes. One is for, you know, the town has an issue with the power that's at the marina. It floods, and it's been like that for a while. So I thought it would be, we could work together, and if I put in a small shed, then maybe I could sell, you know, ice and whatever boating needs to the marina. The town could then move in their electric, and it would be a win-win for everyone. So that's what we're trying to do here. It's not big. It's not going to be an expansion of what I already, I already currently have, a store, a small store. So we would just bring some of the items that are in the store out to that shed and, you know...
Is this the store?
That's right on site.
Is it in that shed?
No, currently there's a 2,500 square foot.
It's in the main building?
It's in the main building, yeah. In the shed right now, there is a shed there. It's just, it's just the service for the marina with the main shut-offs, but it floods at least, you know, four to 10 times a year, and then with every storm. So, you know, the electrical is getting underwater. So it was like, so I just thought, if I put this in, it would be a good income source for me, sell some supplies to the marina, keeping in the same hours that my store is currently open, which is, you know, eight to four during the week. On the weekends, it's open, you know, eight to three, you know, and possibly rent kayaks out of it, or just kind of keep it open for something, something down the road. So I don't know, this is, I don't know if you have a packet with, so it's a basic shed, you know, that would expand over the riprap, and, you know, the current shed would then be gone, it would be taken away.
Is it going in the same place the existing shed is?
It's not going in the same footprint because that's in the flood zone, so it's coming up. Are you familiar with the property, or, okay? So, you know, it was raised however long ago, nine years ago, so it's up, it would be in the raised section where it's currently in my leased area. So that's why I'm the applicant, because it would be going inside my leased area.
So the, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get oriented here.
Yep.
So the current shed...
Yeah, because there's a zip sign down.
Yeah.
I have a picture, if, I don't know if you want to see it.
Oh, that's good. I was just turning that one up, right side up in my...
Yeah, I think I've seen it. I know where this is.
Yeah, so this was two weeks ago. I don't know if you want me to pass this around.
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Well, there's another king tide coming, 14th.
Right, and then, you know, with the storms, it's even higher. So that was two weeks ago. That's the existing shed.
Does it have live power in it?
Yeah.
Live electricity, okay.
Not at this time, I believe it's...
Where is it? On this site plan? Is that it?
No, that's...
It's proposed. This is the proposed?
This is my building now, so it's not...
That's the proposed location?
No, that's, this is the original site plan for my building. So it's not, I guess that would...
That's your building, isn't it?
There it is, right there. This is my current building.
Yeah, what's that?
That's a temporary building that I have. I don't really want it marked on there.
Okay.
It is a shed.
So it's going there. So where's the existing shed?
It's, would be down there.
In the flood plain?
In the flood plain.
So not on, not on your property?
This, I'm not sure what this is indicating. I guess this is the, this is the whole site. So that's the shed right there.
Proposed or new?
That...
Or existing, I mean.
I would call that...
This says proposed.
Yeah, so it would be 10 feet lower down towards the water.
So it's right on the property line?
The picture here shows, where is it? So I don't know if this line is this riprap here. Right there's the seawall. This is it flooded. So right there is, you know, 20 feet of water. This is the gangway to the docks.
So it's just over here, it's right on the seawall?
Yeah, so what we're going to do is we're going to take that and move it right up there, just out of, up in the raised area.
Okay.
It would be smaller than that. I don't know the size of that one, it seems larger.
This is 10 by 14, the proposed one?
Yeah, that one's, that's a little bigger, I think.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, at least I'm oriented now. Okay, any, you guys have anything else?
No, I mean, unless you have any questions.
Just go over to Laura, just to see if you've got...
Nothing major. I had asked Brian about the square footage of the area that was going to be used for sales, just because it seemed to me like, like you might want to know how much area was, you know, you were going to be using for selling things. Most of it, I think, is going to be what they call ship's chandlery type of sales...
Correct.
...that are already going on in the other building. So it's things like lines, pulleys, little, I can't think of...
Yeah, life jackets, you know, that type of thing.
Jackets are good, but it'll mostly be catering to the boaters. We did notify the abutters, so I know sometimes abutters to something like this have concerns about traffic, you know, additional traffic and that sort of thing, but no one seems here, so it doesn't look like...
They got, they got a letter?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if you would really even need additional signs on it, because I think it's going to be word of mouth, and it'll be obvious that it's there.
Yeah, I don't...
Maybe some small, have you thought about signs now?
Actually, I haven't, to be honest with you. If it would be anything, it would be very small, because it's not needed, you know, it's just an extension of, you know, what we already have there, and there's already signs there, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, as far as parking, the parking up there is kind of unique, and you just kind of find a place to park, nothing is marked, it's just kind of casual.
Correct, yeah. Okay.
But definitely elevating the electrical connections is important.
There was a piece from the Board of Health...
Yes.
...that if you were selling, you're planning to sell ice...
Yes.
And apparently, as long as it's bagged ice...
Correct.
...there is no issue.
Correct. We do have a permit from the Board of Health, and it would be bagged ice anyway, so, yeah.
You have a permit to sell ice?
Correct, yeah. They come and they inspect us once a year and reissue the permit.
Gotcha, okay. Could you help me understand the electrical problem? I see it's flooded, but I also see the electrical panels are above the flood. Is, if we move this, are we still getting water into the conduits that are still going to be flooded, or, I mean, what's, what's the exposure here, and how are we fixing that?
I believe the main supply that's going into that, that building is going to be completely rerouted up and come out of, in the elevated section of the land, and everything coming out of that, all those connections you're seeing are all going to be relocated, probably another six feet higher than what they are shown there, in another area that you can't, right where, on this side of that drawing, is the travel lift pit, and there's a wall, a fenced wooden railing system, it's all going to be mounted to that. So all the main shut-offs, disconnects will all be there, so they'll be, you know, at least four to five feet higher than currently.
Right, so I, I'm just looking at your picture here. It looks like the main feeds here, here's your meter, main feed's coming up here. It doesn't look like this has risen to the level of your meter or anything. So I guess, what I'm trying to understand is where, where is it flooding into the electrical system?
Inside that shed, which I don't have a picture for, is probably a five-foot-high main electrical panel that you would see in your house, and that is right at the level of the floor.
Really?
So from that meter, it goes down, and it's rotted out.
Hmm. Okay, and then, but all these, but coming out of here, how does it get to the docks?
It goes into that panel...
Yeah.
That's inside. It comes out, each one has a disconnect, an emergency shut-off, and from there, it's, you can see the cable. They're removed in the winter, and they're reinstalled. It's just a long cable.
I see. So it's like these welding connections here that you're plugging in?
Yes, so that spins off, and is, and the wire is completely removed from the docks and...
That's not, that's not...
And trunk wrap, or, you know, so, so if, in a month from now, all you would see, there would be the receptacle, and the wire would be removed.
And the, the main feed here then...
Comes underground.
Comes underground. Are, so are you relocating it from underground somewhere else?
Yeah, it's, no, it's just about 10 feet back is where the building's going to be, so it's, they're going to go down to the conduit, pull it back out, and then just take a sharp right and go up into my elevated area, and then into the panel up there, put the meter and the main shut-off in there, then come back out with those disconnects.
Okay. So definitely solving the problem here?
Solving the problem for at least...
Does that yard get flooded?
No, the yard does not, no. It used to.
I know. When you say yard, you mean the area above the grills right there?
Yeah, above the grills, yeah.
The boats, yeah. Okay, go ahead, I've got other questions, but...
What was that, the original shed building, was it built, like stick-built, or was it a prefab shed?
That was put in by Greg Webb. It was just a shed he built when he owned the property before the town owned it, so I don't, I don't know. It looks like it's plywood and shingled, it's, it's nothing, it's...
It's a shed.
It's a shed, yeah.
All right, so the rendering that you included here in the little packet...
Yep.
Is that like your idea, or is it 99% or 100% of what it will look like?
Other than...
Like, for instance, the cupola, I think, is a nice little design. I'd say, you know, aesthetically, the clavage should match the existing boatyard building...
Yep.
...if possible.
Yeah, that's, so it's, that's a cedar shingle is what's on the building right now, so, which is, which matches the maritime center. So this, this design is just, was vinyl siding, is what it is. But if I could look into the cedar and see if it's...
Well, aesthetically, I think it would be nicer for the two matched.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, I would agree.
And I'm trying to remember, the existing build, the windows don't have shutters, right? In the, in the boatyard, boatyard building?
My boatyard building does not, no.
Shutters, so, again, I mean, the shutters look nice, but you're trying to keep it consistent.
I think if you went to the cedar shingles, you'd get 90% of the way there, probably, right?
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
Well, I think like the, over on the other side of the marina, at the Millworf, little building they built...
Yep.
...has the cupola, and it looks, they did a really nice job with that little building there. Different function, obviously...
Correct.
...but it's a cute little building.
Yep.
So this could be a nice little asset. So, yeah, I'm just more concerned with the sort of aesthetics of it, but I think what you explained with the electrical makes total sense.
How are the, just while I'm thinking about it, how does the new shed get affixed? Is it piers, is it...
It's piers, yeah, there's, there's a, I think, is this part of your package?
No.
I think we got the, oh, you got it. How'd you get it?
He gave it to me.
Oh.
I've got some copies of this.
So these are like sonotube-type things that they'll pour, and...
So this is the foundation planet.
Oh, great, thanks.
That would be how we would, there'd be a small deck in the front to traverse. I can't...
Oh, here, is this it? Is that what we're looking at?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Now, is this the building that's shown on the site plan?
No.
The site plan has nothing to do with this building. So we don't really have a plan showing where this building is going to be located?
Where...
It's on the site plan.
No, he's just saying it's not on the site plan, or...
It says proposed.
The proposed building is, but not the existing, it's not on there.
The existing looks like it's right on the wall.
I was just a little confused because it's the boatyard building foundation as-built, so...
This was...
Which boatyard building are they talking about, the new one?
And mine, my old one, that one.
Right.
This was the, this is for this building.
Okay, and this is the new shed over here?
No, it's right there.
Oh, 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 okay, okay, great, sorry.
And not to be really confused, but it's like it's showing shed, but that shed is a completely different shed, this one here.
Completely different shed. That one, we have a, for our power washing system, we reclaim the water, and it goes into a ditch, and then it goes, it's piped into that shed that houses two big tanks that recycles the water, takes the bottom teen out of all the bad stuff out, so that shed is part of my water.
Is going to be up here, so it's actually...
It's filled with equipment.
Okay, right, it's actually this way.
Just curious, what is that, what's the, I don't remember that building off the top of my head.
It's off the back.
Does that have clavage on the siding?
No, that is vinyl.
It's vinyl siding?
And then there's these stairs.
Right here.
Yep.
It's kind of hidden, it's kind of like on the back, like you don't see it, there's always boats around it.
This is a little convoluted, trying to figure this out.
So this, the way this is set up, here's the riprap...
Correct.
...stone wall that you have right here in this picture.
Correct, and I believe that also has a little indication where the, which, I think, I think I gave you all my copies.
Right, so, and this, it's right next to the ramp...
Can you take this hand back, so that...
Yeah.
You're just seeing travel lift pier, oh, that's for the lift. Oh, it's right next to it.
This, that, right there. So right here is my, is the travel lift pier, where my machine comes out.
Over here.
Right there, just as, that right there is right there, that's what you're looking at, and this riprap is this riprap right there.
So basically, where the boat is, is where you're going to be?
It's a little over, it's right on the corner there.
Kind of over this way, well, okay. And then, and then this is going to...
It's moving about 12 feet.
14 by 10 with a five-foot wraparound deck?
Yeah, correct.
Are you paying for all of this?
I'm paying for the construction of the building, and the piers, and the deck.
And...
The electrical, the electrical works, it's town-owned, so the town would be responsible for that.
So what would be waterways that would be responsible, probably?
I'm not sure.
Steve, Steve has that money in his budget already.
Okay.
He's got, not even an extra budget, he's got the money.
And so, how do you get into this place? It's a ramp in the back, is that the idea?
Well, no, in...
Because this, well, there's a lower level, existing stone.
Where it says existing stone is...
Oh, this is the area that's flooded right now.
Correct.
Right, so normally you'd be able to walk through there, and go up some stairs to get into that, but as it stands right now, you'd need hipwood.
There is the existing shed.
And so, basically, when people drive in, from the street view at least, that would be a solid wall then? Meaning that, though, what you've shown in this little rendering that you have, is really the boat side or the marina side with the door and the window?
That would be facing the water.
Facing the water, right.
Correct.
The other side...
The only entrance is really from the water, from, from the marina.
And, but the other side would just be a blank wall?
Blank wall, yeah.
With shingles.
With shingles, cedar shingles.
Okay.
And given that this is a, going to be a store, and it looks like you're selling ice cream and stuff in here...
Yeah, that...
And you have counter space?
It's going to be, you know, ice, just the same things that I sell in my other store, which is, you know, soda, there's ice, there's water.
Does this need, it's small, but it doesn't need another means of egress out of it?
I don't think there'd be enough room for three people.
It would have to have 15 people or 1500 square feet.
Okay, so it's small enough, you don't need it?
Yeah.
And, so what's the outside going to look like? Is it lit? Is it, is there signage?
It would just basically look like this, you know, with the cedar...
I know, is there, is there light on it? Are you lighting it in the evening kind of thing?
It's, it would be closed in the evening, so no, I mean, there's lighting around.
What's the operating hours?
Right now, we're eight to 4:30.
Well, it appears that you have, on the original motion sensors...
Correct.
...in terms of lights.
Correct.
And so, other than that, that may be all you need, because it...
Yeah, that's all that's there in the marina, I mean, the marina just has little docklights, it's, you know, we'd be, it would be whatever the marina already has existing for lights, so...
So it will be lit, or it's not?
It, whatever is at the marina right now, so there's, has to be some lighting for the people to get from their boats to their cars, so...
A motion detector.
No, I see that. I'm just asking, is there going to be light on the building?
I would think that I may want to put in a front door, you know, like, just a doorway The main purpose is that people aren't coming in, it's that they use that front slider. If you look, there's a little sliding window. That's, it's not something where I would expect people to be coming in and out, other than, you know, staff.
They're not coming in a sliding window?
No, to open in, to sell the product through the window.
Oh, to sell through, okay, yeah.
No, the, the door would be for staff, it's not, it wouldn't be anything that people would be coming in, and, I mean, there's no room, it's very small.
And did you also mention that the railing would be a cable railing?
Uh, no.
Okay, I just was curious, I thought I heard that.
No, the railing would just match what's existing to the travel lift, which is, it's wood.
Wood railing, okay. Because the maritime center has the cable railing, but that's...
Correct.
Okay.
But this isn't really the Taj Mahal.
Exactly, exactly.
You know, I mean, this is just a u...
Utility.
Yes, thank you.
Well, it's dressed up a little bit more than that, with a deck, right?
With a deck, but it also has the cupola, and it's going to be...
It should have a nice look to it.
And shingles.
Yep.
And the door opens to the water side, so, and it's, he's getting it out of the flood plain, and the budget includes moving all of the electrical, and you're taking care of the construction.
Correct.
Is it anchoring?
Yeah. And, nothing hazardous or toxic in this building?
No.
Like, we're not selling chemicals, or fuel, or...
No, 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 no.
...any of that kind of stuff? So nothing's even stored there? That would be...
No, no.
...toxic, okay. And from the perspective of people getting to it, that's, when the boats are gone, that's a parking area there, next to it?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, this would have seasonal hours, this would only be, you know, the marina is only open...
Right, it's not going to be open in February, right?
No, this is May fif, you know, May 15th when the marina opens, the marina closes October 15th.
Okay.
Probably, probably Labor Day, though.
Okay, let's see, anything else? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Reggie, I sort of skipped over you, go ahead.
No, I don't have any questions that actually haven't already been asked, I don't think.
Will this have heating or cooling?
Not initially, no. No.
But you said initially, so you're thinking you put air conditioners?
Well, I don't, I don't know how hot it would be getting there, so there may have to be something put on the backside away from the, from the marina to cool it, you know, if it's a small unit, but fans will probably be just fine.
Yeah, I'd be more worried about having an outdoor condenser that somebody hears at night, that's running at night. I mean, during the daytime, it's fine.
Well, we'd be closed, we'd be, you know, we'd be closed.
As long as somebody shut it off.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there much around there, though? I mean, the nearest neighbor's across the street, and that's quite a ways, but...
But there's houses right next to it?
No, there aren't.
There are.
Are there?
Yeah, right along Edward Foster, when it comes around the turn. There's three houses right there.
But there's a big, large area that's kind of like the seagrass, or, it was called the swamp.
Yeah, there's a much area between that...
It would probably be three, directly to, from the water to the street is probably 200, 300 yards, so that would be the closest, and to the left to the north would be, I don't know, it's 3.2 acres, the whole property, so it'd be at least...
Yeah, but this is over by the boat lift, which is closer to that side, so...
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have any other questions here. Anybody else?
Is the existing shed used for pretty much the same thing, as far as services?
The existing shed that's there right now is strictly, I believe they store some of the pedestals from the marina, and it houses the electric.
That's it, okay.
That's strict, that's it.
And that's completely gone away? You're going to demolish it?
That would be, well, the town would then have to, that would be something they would have to...
Is the town planning to do that?
Yes, I believe so, but, I mean, you'd have to speak with, I guess, Steve.
Is it historic?
I see the two by fours, it's not even finished inside.
Yeah.
Yes, it's completely open, there's no insulation, it's...
No, if you're going to put a shed here, then it's like, let's take the junk out, not leave another piece of junk there, right? Okay, do we have a motion?
Okay. You need to fill in the name of the site plan. The white one.
This one right here.
So the site plan is, boatyard building as-built. I move to approve the attached site plan titled Boat Yard Building Foundation As-Built, an attached rendering as these meet the requirements of the Town of Situate zoning bylaw, section 770.6, Site Plan Review Standards of Review to a Degree Consistent with Reasonable Use of the Site for the Purpose Permitted by the Regulations of the District in which the Land is Located, and Approve the Attached Site Plan Subject to the Following Conditions. One, all requirements of federal, state, and local agencies shall be met. Two, sales shall be limited to ship's supplies, ice, soda, and packaged... I put individually packaged food, like little... Individually packaged food. Three, there shall be no inside seating for customers. Four, any new sign shall be no larger than six square feet. Five, cedar shingles shall be used on the exterior to match existing construction. Six, the electrical shut-offs shall be raised two feet above the base flood elevation. Seven, site plan approval shall lapse after two years from the grant thereof if a substantial use of construction thereof has not, not sooner commenced except for good cause. Such approval for good cause may be extended in writing by the planning board upon written request of the applicant submitted to the planning board at least sixty days prior to the expiration of the two-year period.
Okay, um, any discussion on that before we?
I just had one clarification point. On your, the limited foods, did, did, did that cover ice cream? Because, I mean, there are-
There'll be, there's no ice cream.
Oh, there, because it says ice cream dispenser.
It, it's listed there. That was a previous drawing. There's, there's no ice cream.
All right. So I guess packaged food could be ice cream bars.
There's no ice cream.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify that, but thank you.
The last one, which was the electrical shut-off shall be two feet above the base flood elevation? How high do we expect them to actually be?
I, I don't know what-
What is the base flood elevation?
Yeah, I, I don't know what it is for that area.
Do we know?
I haven't looked at it.
No, I haven't looked at it recently.
At one point, I know, you know, I discussed it, and that's, I think, he had checked it, we had looked at it, but it's, um...
So you're comfortable wherever we are is gonna be below the base flood elevation? The actual floor will be below the base flood elevation?
Um, I'm not even sure of that, Steve. I think this is an overwash zone. I don't think it's a major zone, but I have to check.
Okay.
I know the catch was to get the gear above the base flood elevation, which it is not now.
Yeah, I'm, I guess what I'm thinking is, well, if the base flood elevation is fourteen, and, uh, the floor is fourteen, then this would push this two feet above the floor. And it seems like you should maximize the height of the shut-off to minimize the possibility that you're gonna end up in this situation again.
But that's a good point. I mean, you could put a minimum of, if you wanted to insert that for anything else.
Based a minimum of two feet above the base flood elevation. I would also like to add to number two. Sales shall be limited to ship's supplies, ice, soda, and individually packaged snack food with Board of Health permits, if necessary.
Okay. And, and nothing toxic will be stored in the shed? No hazardous material?
No hazardous.
Well, you just said soda.
Okay. Um, any other comments? So, do I hear a motion as amended?
Um, I second the motion as amended, as our discussion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Open for the next season, hopefully?
If it had the most in it, stuff on it.
Well, okay. You need this?
I don't need anything out of, I'll take it if you don't want me to.
Oh, I'll keep it, if you don't mind.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, we're a few minutes behind, but, uh, we're here for the preliminary discussion on the Pocket Park in North Situate Beach. Hi.
I'm Leslie Brigham, this is Lesley.
I'm Lani.
Pull up a chair. Speak into the microphone. This is your fifteen minutes of fame.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. I guess I should have, I can get the glass, so, get some air.
I'm Leslie Brigham, and this is Leslie DineLL. We're representing the North Situate Beach Improvement Association. We would, we have been for quite a while attempting to make an improvement in an area which the second page will show is in much need of improvement. The reason it looks this way is because years ago, the seawall undermined there, and it all dropped down. And the seawalls have been repaired there, and this has been filled back in, but this is what's remaining. The town has added benches along the way, and we, as a beach association, wanted to add some dune grass and some roses. And in doing that, we kept going to various, we went to the town. He said, "That sounds fine with me, go to conservation." They said, "That's, you get cleared by the conservation," and they, we just keep going from community committee, so we're...
Or before you now.
Then we found out how much we have to do.
Well, the butt stops here.
But, well, here's what happened. The town is not going to help us with this financially at all. So, we found out that we needed to add large boulders and rocks for wave break.
Yep.
So that increased the cost beyond the beach association's ability. So then, we had the idea of going to CPC for the money that the beach association couldn't come, come forward.
So this is a preliminary presentation in advance of going to the CPC for final approval?
No, we've been there three times.
CPC has been wonderful in working with us in a way to keep this into their jurisdiction of how they could help with this project.
And I do believe, and you can correct me, but CPC pretty much is on boards with this now, assuming you guys are, and we have to go before the RAP department. So we have, after we did the, the second application.
Okay.
Steve, one of the, um, what came up was CPC could not fund a garden, per se. However, historically CPC has funded pocket parks. And so, this has been changed, the name has been changed to a pocket park. So CPC can, in fact, fund a portion of this, and the beach association is going to put money of theirs into it as well.
CPC will do the hardscape, and the beach association will be responsible for the plants that are installed. That way, if the plants wash away, it's our problem. But the CPC will be thrown.
Okay.
Hardscapes.
And you have a, you have a plan or design for this?
Yes. This is a color copy that might be easier for you to understand.
Got a big printout here. Didn't even have to get my glasses out.
One of the things we would like to add-
So that's this bench right here, right?
Um, the beach association is, is, North Situate Beach Improvement Association is about to be 120 years old next year. So this is a nice time to do this as well. We would like to have an area of some sort of documentation that the beach association does exist. We would like to wrap that into the fact that, that we have the "I love you, mine at light," um, blinking at, at you from this view. We would like to have some sort of, this is just a silly, quick idea. Gives you the date of the association.
Hold on.
It gives you the 143, the signal "I love you," or the "but," uh, because a lot of people don't know the signal of "mine at light." This is just a quick idea. So you're also getting some information, you're seeing history, um, we're using native grasses.
Cool.
We're doing the breakwater area, splash area, where we can see it needs to be.
No, no watering required, no?
We will, to establish it, we will, and we have neighbors that are gonna let us use there.
Right, so we don't need to run sprinklers, or?
There's no access to water there whatsoever.
Okay.
I mean, it's gonna take a while to get these plants established, which is not gonna be an easy thing. A little labor of love will have to go on in there.
So the stones that we're looking at are, are large, they're like ripraped stones?
They're, yeah, we're, we're looking at things like-
Couple tons, kinda thing?
Yeah, yeah. And they'll be planted. They won't be sitting on top, they'll be planted.
Right, somebody's sort of designing this and, and-
As it goes along, yeah.
And, can you just tell us what, uh, you're planning to use here? It looks like dune grass?
Two different types of dune grass.
Dune grass, dune grass, native, so it's all grasses, then?
Basically.
Yeah. And rosa?
Rosa rugosa.
Rugosa, yeah.
Native dune grass.
Those things will live through anything.
Right. And once established, they're, they tolerate drought.
Yeah.
That's, getting them established will be a little bit of work.
Um, and there's no other changes to access to this thing? We're not asking for new parking areas or anything like that? It is what it is, right?
No.
Okay.
We're just filling it, we're, the existing site and adding plants and hardscape.
Mm-hmm. Nothing else that's necessary, lighting, none of that kinda stuff? Okay. Yeah?
I think, basically, um, the beach association is just looking for an okay from us, that, you know, we have no problem with it. I mean, it is what it is, and it will make an area that is really a disaster look fabulous. Because, once upon a time, it was a very historic area, with the hotels and the big houses and, and whatever. And people drive through there all the time.
Kinda neat to see these in color.
That's great.
Are those in each picture, sir?
I was actually gonna say, I mean, I know it's not in the scope, but to have like a historic plaque saying this was, or if you look this, just down at the end, the, the plaque for the Cliff Hotel, because this is about where the Cliff Hotel was, right? Where this house is?
No, it was across the street.
No.
Across the street.
Really?
It's way up here.
Okay.
No, but, um, it would be fun to maybe put some more historical things, maybe engraving in some of these rocks here and there.
Yeah. Well, like they did recently at the lighthouse with the Atresco. That was wonderful, that big rock that has the, the, I don't know what, sand blasted in, or carved in, I don't know.
You could interpret it fine, too, right?
That, that's kind of interesting.
So, I mean, these things can all be added.
Right, right.
They can all be added as time goes by.
And this could be designed better, so?
Yes. So it, it's just, this, I think, basically, speaking as the liaison to CPC, they're just looking for an endorsement, not, not approval, per se.
Right.
But just, gee, this looks great, run with it.
I think Laura made a good comment in one of her notes, and I go this, this, I actually walk hard dog here all the time. So to have like a little, was it mutt-mutt station, is a good idea?
It could be around the corner on Bailey's Causeway. I mean, you really don't want it right there because it's so beautiful, you know, maybe you could tuck it away somewhere else, but...
The dog, um, what, the bags?
Yeah, like little bags. I just thought it was a good idea.
You know the problem that, that's who's responsible for adding them when they're empty?
Well, the, the animal control actually is, is taking that on more. They wanna get a whole, um, a whole lot of those, um, little dispensers.
Well, there is a trash bin down at the end, it could go down near the trash bin.
I just thought it, as a suggestion, I thought that was a nice suggestion.
Just an idea. There were a couple of, you know, hefty-looking dogs marching around when I went up there, but it's a beautiful, beautiful spot.
You stand a better chance of people have to take out what they bring in. Right?
I certainly do.
Yeah.
What's that, dune grass? This isn't going to be an invitation to walk on it, it's really-
Right. Particularly with the roach raccoon.
I just wanted to mention one other thing. We're doing the open split, open space plan right now, and it's really the open space and recreation plan. And every single open space and recreation site, we have to inventory for accessibility. So, I don't know, you know, I don't think anybody would expect anything major to change, but it just might be something worthwhile to touch base with a commission on disabilities. They might want, for instance, one handicap parking space, you know, something like that.
But we're not adding any parking.
We're not adding parking.
I know, but you're, you're sort of creating a little more of a recreational site than what you had. I, I'm just also putting it out there because they're quite a, um, they're quite aware of what their rights are, and you wouldn't want them-
I want a communication commission with Jahan. I know exactly.
Okay, so you know-
But I would say that it's-
So I'm just saying, you know, maybe there's some way to-
I would say, though, that this is not creating any new recreation area.
It's just enhancing what was already there.
The benches are already there, right? The benches are already there, so this is sort of beautifying what's there.
Yeah.
With, with grasses and shrubs, right, so?
And the other thing is, you also have this promenade across the front of it, on the ocean side, that certainly would be accessible, that someone could scoot up on a scooter, or whatever.
Yeah, it's accessible.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, yeah. People walk right on, there's no ramp or anything.
I just feel, it's kind of my due diligence to mention it.
Is this accessible right here?
Correct.
Correct, it's just level.
Level to the street.
The wheelchair could go right across.
And that's the beauty about this area, is you see a lot of elderly walk, it's a flat place to walk, with the view of the ocean, and it has a railing. And you see a lot of people, a lot of elderly, um, doing their little therapy there.
What happens when you get overwash?
That's what the break is.
No, I know that, but, um, I would imagine you get a lot of stone over that wall, too.
Not really that. Not too much. And when we went before conservation, Frank thought if we did the rocks at least four feet, which is, when you see, if you go there now, after a storm or whatever, you can see where it breaks, four-foot rocks would be enough. And it would hit the rocks and then just go back. And then after, the Beach Inergment Project, starting next fall, I mean, there won't be any waves hitting there, period.
We hope.
We hope. Try to be positive. Good luck with it.
Until the sea level rises.
Right.
Right. We'll all be dead, so there you go.
There you go.
Do you happen to know when those, the benches were put in? I mean, they've been there for a long time, right?
No, there was a new one put in, I don't know, in this year. They're only a couple of years old.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I would say in the last five years.
Okay.
Wild guess.
However, in bad storms, they aren't the best design. The old, the old ones lasted twenty years or more. Geez, the wave can take the top part of those stone things in it, we've seen them flipped right over.
Oh, really?
The old wooden ones were actually, that style with the back was better designed.
What's the round, um, it's like a sister or something, what is it?
Well, we used to, um, plant them with flowers every year, but it wasn't just sitting there. It had, had beach roses and things all around. Then the sinkhole came and changed everything. So we used to put, beach association used to put summer color in the planters on the way. But we're going to be removing that.
Okay. And you wouldn't expect this to, sort of, the, the use of this to change dramatically? Like, it's not gonna become a hangout or something?
No, I, no, it won't, really, it's not gonna be an invitation to walk on there.
I mean, there's no parking there anyway, you know, what, three cars can park eleven, that's about it.
And you're supposed to have a sticker when you do park there.
Right.
Okay. Do we have a, a motion?
I thought it was gonna be a discussion, like, you know, some of the others, where we-
I think we should just have, have an emotion as support of the, the application itself, as support of the, the concept itself. Obviously, whatever permits are needed ultimately have to be acquired, but, um...
I would then make the motion to endorse, encourage you to go forward with the proposed Pocket Park on Mine Beach, or North Situate Beach.
Do, now, do we get that in writing in some way, so, we, for others?
You can have a videotape of it, if you like. The young lady over here is making it as we speak.
Yeah, I think it's a great use of CPC funds.
It's nice to hear.
So we have a motion on the table?
Oh, I second the motion.
Second the motion.
I think it's excellent.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Real quick question for you. The first picture here, it looks so flat. Where is this exactly?
That's what the beach used to be.
Yeah.
Where the walls?
Um, this would be probably opposite grasshopper and all your-
Really?
There'd be a lot more sand there, it'd fill everybody hard enough.
High tide is probably right there, that line.
But this, the elevation, like the, like where it is now, where it's down quite a bit?
Yeah, that's-
That was all level?
No, no, Glades Road is a little higher here, as this, this hasn't changed in elevation. This is what's changed in elevation.
Okay.
There's a lot more beach there. There's probably eight feet of beach there.
And that's the case all the way up and down the coast.
Yeah.
Just as a, a reference, when I moved to Situate, um, ten years ago, at high tide, there was sand on Mine Beach. And now, at high tide-
It was at least thirty feet of beach at high tide.
And now, it's gone.
Yeah.
All gone.
Same thing in Nantasket. Nantasket Beach dropped two feet in a decade, in a century.
But I love reading about the Cliff Hotel and all the historic, all the people that worked there, and the parties that were there. Oh, really?
My first job was in Maine, with, with the band up top.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto old business, new business, et cetera. Reappointment to Design Review Committee. Laura Delong.
I distributed her resume. So you can-
So, you can see it. Sometimes you've gone out and looked for new people, sometimes you've reappointed the people that you already had.
How long has she been on the committee?
Three years.
Three years?
Yeah.
Sounds like she's just getting efficient now.
Yeah, she's, she's, you know, I, I know she's not an architect, but she has a lot of building and construction experience. I believe she's done cost estimating and that type of thing. But she also is kind of sensitive to a lot of design issues, and I think she does a good job.
Anything else? I mean, just a quick question. Was this publicly sort of advertised or?
No, it wasn't. So, if you want us to do that, I think you, you need to tell us and we'll do it. But, you know, it's really up to you what you wanna do.
I don't know, do you think that we should or not?
Well, often, first of all, nobody wants.
That's what I was thinking.
Here you have somebody that's interested, that has the ability. Often, the Design Review Committee went wanting. Yeah, they did in past years, yeah.
I would say, having done one three-year term, it probably makes sense to take all of that process and education and keep it for at least another term.
Yes.
Maybe once you get to two terms, you, you do another search or something, but, or at least an advertisement.
They're not meeting every couple of weeks. It's like once a quarter potentially, or it's been a little bit more this year, maybe once a month or something.
Yeah, once every couple of months, maybe, average.
How many people on that committee?
Three.
Yeah, and she's, she's not the newest, though.
No, the newest is John Rillman.
John's the newest, yeah. Okay, and it looks like she has a Bachelor of Architectural Engineering from Penn State. Yeah, I, I think it, it looks to me like it's a pretty good fit, really, with a lot of sort of project management and construction as a, as an experience, too. I would be, I would be in favor of just reappointing her myself, but what do you think, Reggie?
No, I saw her resume online, and you said that it was impressive.
Yeah.
I'm all for it.
Move to reappoint Laura DeLonge to the Design Review Committee?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Consider it done.
Accounting?
And it's also, I think, just the good, it's a good dynamic right now with the three of them, as you mentioned. They work well together, it seems like.
Well, they got a couple of big projects that are going on right now, too. It'd be, be good to maintain that continuity through completion at least. What do we got? Accounting?
Move $495 to pay the American Planning Association dues for Laura Harbottle. Move $1,500 to pay Wendy Fontanero for the architectural facade review of replacement Wetherby House. And move $96.48 to Gatehouse Media for legal ad in the Situate Mariner on 10/13. 10/20 for 489 Countryway Scenic Road hearing.
I second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
And isn't it just one signature now, or? No, we haven't done that here. Oh, okay, we have, yes, so just one.
Who did we appoint as the one signature? Was it Ann?
I think so.
I think it was.
Yeah. Ann was the, and me as the backup.
Okay, good. How about minutes?
That's a meeting, wow.
We shouldn't have done that the other day.
Well, the last meeting, there was like $10,000 worth of approval. And I'm exaggerating, but there were a lot of accounting.
Oh, and a lot of signing.
Move the minutes of October 27.
And those are the same as you sent out?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Reggie has to abstain because he wasn't here.
Okay. We only got three ayes anyway. He picked right up on that. Liaison reports. Unfortunately, I did actually, speaking of Design Review, I missed the last one, so I apologize for that. I don't know, Laura, were you at that?
Um, yeah, yeah, it was good.
Do you wanna, is there any submarine or?
It was on John Helen's proposed building. There were a couple of things that were very kind of, matter of fact, you know, very understandable, like there was a big deck proposed in the back. It's a small site, there really isn't room for it. The deck was almost on top of the parking, so they're shrinking back the deck. On the front, you know, the rest of it, it's gonna be kind of a barn red color.
Where is this?
You know where John Helen's building is, next to where the microbrewery is gonna be? There's gonna be a new building in the front on Old Countryway. The building will have a footprint of about 1,000 square feet, a little bit less. So, it's small, but it does add a lot of activity to the site. There's gonna be two apartments above, two very small apartments, but two apartments, and then two offices underneath.
And that's something we're gonna see soon, or?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
EDC met last night, and we talked about our visioning, a number of different things. We have to speak with, I'm going to connect with Ted Bovitz, who's our consultant, to talk about next steps. It was a very, very interesting meeting. We appropriated money for the boat show. And we also need to think about the next steps in terms of including the stakeholders, the property owners, primarily in Green Bush. We also discovered that the pipe in Green Bush for the sewer is not large enough in terms of capacity. And we're running into a problem with 50 Countryway.
Yeah.
That the pipe is just not adequate.
I saw Kevin's letter on that, and it was really, one of the questions I wanted to ask here was, it appears that the only thing they're addressing is the capacity in the actual pipe. They're not addressing the capacity at the treatment plant where all this stuff ends up, right?
Well, I think they are addressing that, too, but they were already, yeah, no, well, not in that letter. They're already tied in at the building that, that we were all trying to save or that, you know, was intended to be saved. So, they're on sewer now. Now, how?
For a limited set of connections, right?
How that works with expanding the volume is, is something that, you know, DBW must, you know, have some, have some procedure for, but.
Had to find out.
Yeah.
I'd like to know, because, you know, I think that's part of what we should have a sense of when these things are coming through, is, is there capacity in the, in the plant? And if there's not, should part of a condition be, you know, a two-to-one, you know, sort of investment to get to, you know, get INI taken care of or something in order to free up capacity? Because it's my understanding that we were at capacity.
Yeah, or we're at that 80% where if we go above it, then we have to, you know, change our permit.
Right.
And all that. In talking to Kevin Cafferty, he was, he brought up Rockland, which requires when you, you use a certain amount of capacity, that you have to show how you're gonna prevent INI of, you know, a certain, a certain ratio compared to the amount of capacity that you're using. So, they are looking into these things, and I think they're making some progress, but they need to kind of, you know, go just a little further and decide what it is that, that they want, and then, you know, recommend it to the selectmen and so on. But they're thinking along those lines, that they've got to do something about INI, like as a standard practice, and not just, you know, when some, some big development comes in, then they'll think about it. But it's like with everything, that's, you know, something.
Yeah, I was just thinking that that's something we should think about when the big development's here, right? That, that piece should be addressed. Because I think the guys, you know, regardless of whether we actually move forward with the parking lot project, right?
Yeah.
That particular proposal was a piece of the thing that could have been sort of a fatal flaw there is there isn't enough capacity to handle what they wanna do, right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So, Ann, when you were saying that it wasn't large enough, are you talking about like the main? Are you talking about the connection, or just the, was the main going?
Under the road.
Under the road, okay.
So, we have some work cut out for us, but in terms of involving people in the area, so as an example, as we discussed last night, that whole business with the three-quarters of an acre of land in the parking lot, nobody really knew about it until town meeting. So, it went down to defeat primarily because most people didn't understand what it was all about. It wasn't about future building on that parking lot. It wasn't about 40Bs, it wasn't about anything. So, basically, we lost $225,000 because nobody really quite understood what it was all about. The goal of EDC is to educate people before anything is presented, you know, keep people in the loop. So, that, knowledge is power. So, the more knowledgeable people are about what EDC and/or the town is proposing, and we feel that there's two segments in Green Bush. There's the Green Bush District where the pizza place is and so on, and then the Driftway. You basically have two different segments, and how can we deal with all of that? So, we're going to try and keep the, the selectmen in the loop, so that it doesn't come as this, oh, my god, surprise.
Were the selectmen surprised by the, the land? A little bit, maybe?
I don't think so.
See, that doesn't, you know.
I don't think they were. And they've been in the conversations all along.
I know, but unfortunately.
Been in conversations all along.
But unfortunately, it was, on the one hand, in my opinion, too much information was given when really not too much was needed. It boiled down to, as I said on the floor of town meeting, it is about a parcel of land. It has nothing to do with anything else. But a couple of people made it about something else. And that is truly unfortunate, because nobody really knew what was happening. Again, the more people know, the easier it is for them to agree and/or disagree before it becomes a donnybrook on the floor of town meeting. So, that's, and then we meet Monday night for CPC.
When does, what's the sort of the, the big picture schedule for CPC decisions?
January.
January?
For April Town Meeting?
For April, yeah.
We have the people in about trash barrels refurbishing and branding trash barrels. I don't think that's gonna fly. We have the Cedar Point Association, they want benches and trash barrels. We have beach boardwalks for town beaches that are ADA approved for Egypt, Pagety, Sand Hills, Hummerock, and Minor Beaches. We have, that's, don't forget, beach, a beach shade structure. You've already seen the Driftway Dog Park, the Pocket Park, Lighthouse Benches and Trash, Central Field House Construction with Recreation, that hasn't come before us. Central Field Renovations Supplemental Funding Increase. Roach Field, that's been in here. Development of Athletic Fields Study, Clap Road. Documents and Photo Preservation, Historical. Man House Roof Repair, Historical. Restoration of Two Historic Plaque, Historical. And Affordable Housing Authority, Lost and Green Apartments. This is the, the project that the Housing Authority is contemplating behind Central Park for 30 affordable, low-income senior units.
Yeah, I'm supposed to go to that meeting next week sometime, 17th or something like that.
So, that is what is happening with CPC.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome. Speaking of the refurbishment of the historical markers, there was one that was just refurbished up on Third Cliff. Came out really nice. I don't know, I don't think about the CPC funds. I'm not 100% sure. But, anyway.
And then this is a picture of this, they wanna take, you know, the, I don't know what you would call them, the columns, if you will, that are holding up the canopy in North Situate, those sort of wishbone-type things. Well, there's six of them left.
Oh, yeah, you mentioned that.
Yeah, there's six of them, and they wanna put two of them at Pagety and two of them at Egypt, and put canvas over them so people can sit in the shade. So, at any rate.
Okay. Town Planner Report is the last thing on the agenda.
I'll just mention that we've been doing an awful lot of work on signs in Coal Parkway. You may have heard that Coal Parkway is being completely redesigned as far as the traffic flow. And part of that is gonna be, there're gonna be limits on how long people can park. One of the things I think that will happen from that is some of the businesses that keep their trucks in Coal Parkway, like week in and week out, they're just not gonna be able to do that anymore. Or if they do it, they'll get ticketed, and at least the town will get some revenue back for it. So, it's all happening November 21st? Yeah, 20th and 21st, that weekend. So, the, the sign guy seems to want someone like there to help them get the right ones in the right spots, so.
And that will be you.
That will be me.
And when you say being redesigned, is there a physical, besides the signs, are there other physical improvements being made?
No, it's, the traffic flow is gonna be changed, so it's gonna be a one-way circulation pattern. If you come in where the movie theater is, you're gonna take a right by the CVS and the longer that, and then you'll just keep going around in that direction counterclockwise.
Okay. So, if you wanna go back, wanna turn around and go back, you actually have to loop around along the water? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. I guess if you're, if you wanted to say.
Or if you're coming from the other direction, right? You're not gonna be able to come the other direction?
What do you say, the other direction?
Coming off the front street?
Um, yeah, no, you can go in there, it's just gonna be counterclockwise. You know, the whole pattern around the outside is gonna be counterclockwise. But you can drive up and down the aisles in the middle to kind of cut across.
But you can't drive by CVS going, going north?
You can't go from, coming from, from where the mountain bank is or whatever, you're not gonna be able to take a left and go by CVS. You have to go around.
You have to go out and around.
And that's another thing in terms of EDC that we're looking at in the future to discuss future plans. Pocket Park down there. We talked about the Coast Guard Station, which may be being vacated. We need sanitary facilities in the harbor, which, other than the Harbor Massages Office, there are none.
So, that's something else that we're talking about as well. So, we, we're busy, we're busy people.
Anything else, Laura?
I think that's the main thing.
Okay. Well, then, we'll entertain Richard's motion tonight, then.
Oh, okay. Well, it was quick.
All those in favor? Aye. We're adjourned.